Going to go ahead and call to order the September 10th meeting of the Bristol, Virginia City Council. Please join me in a moment of silence. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. First off, welcome everybody. I'm sure we've got some people here who may not have been here in a while or maybe not have been here at all. One thing I'll remind you all, if you want to speak on any item, be it a non-agenda item or a specific item on the agenda, there's a sign-up sheet in the back, so be sure you've signed up on it if you want to speak. Counsel, do we have anything?
Yeah, a couple of things. A couple of things, you know, in the spirit of Earl Warren, who said he turns to his sports page first because that's where man's accomplishments are from the sports world. First, I'd like to congratulate the Bristol Pirates on the winning season and making the playoffs. I'd also like to congratulate them for being the recipient of the John Henry Moss Award for Community Service. Also like to note Kelsey Harrington, who finished number second in the nation last night at the school board meeting, they were talking about her accomplishment. That is, there's a lot of accomplishments there, but that is a very impressive accomplishment. And then finally, to thank the Bristol Little League for a successful fall tournament this weekend, and that's good because not only for what they do for the kids, but how that brings people into our community. So, a lot of good going on, on the sports page, not necessarily the front page.
Any else got anything?
Yeah, I got something. I want to congratulate the city staff. I mean, we now have, having our finance credit rating increased by two credit factors, I don't think that comes by happen chance. This staff has really worked hard over the last two, two and a half years to see what we can do to cut costs and what we can do to increase revenues, and it's worked out. It's not been popular, but I want to warn the community, you need to come in here during budget time. This hall needs to be full just like it is tonight because this city is moving forward, but it's not out of the woods by a long stretch. So, we've got some difficult decisions, we've got some difficult communications between us and the school system on a new school, and we can't put this city in jeopardy from a financial standpoint, and it's going to take every single person in this community to come in here and voice your, at least your view, right, on where we should take this community. Because we're talking about decisions that will, that will impact this city for the next 30 to 40 years, will be coming up in this next 12 months, and I kid you not, the next 40 years, decisions will be made in this council chamber that we'll be looking at for 40 years, all right? So, it's that important. So, again, hats off to the staff, we've worked hard, we've got the finances almost in order, but we've got to keep plowing forward. We're not out of the woods.
One thing I'll say, and I know he won't toot his own horn, so I'm going to recognize Bill and also Mayor Fire Robbin from Bristol, Tennessee for their work. I attended a press conference this afternoon where they announced a new children's book called It's Bristol Baby. And basically, any kid that's born at Bristol Regional Medical Center from here on out will get a copy of this book, and it's just a really nice thing, and it helps further their goal and their agenda of children being on grade level reading by grade three. So, I just want to thank Mayor Fire Robbin and Bill and everyone else who worked on this so much to get that going. Now, before we move into the agenda, I just want to kind of remind folks who may not have done this before or what have you. So, we've got a lot of people signed up for speaking on agenda items. Basically, the way it'll work, when you come up, if you could state your name and where you live, and there are three lights on the podium that you'll be at, so you get three minutes apiece, and you'll have a green light when you start. When you hit two and a half minutes, it'll turn yellow, and then when you hit three minutes, it'll turn red. So, I know we've got a lot of people here, and I don't think anyone wants to be here all night, so as long as you can kind of keep it at three minutes would be, would be really great. This is a public hearing, so there won't be any debate from counsel tonight on this. You know, we're specifically here to listen to your concerns and listen to what you have to say. So, and that's an important part of any process, is actually hearing what the general public has to say. So, you won't hear any kind of argument or debate from us on this, and we won't engage back with you, we're just listening to what you have to say. So, we'll go ahead and jump into the agenda. The first item is matters to be presented to the public, non-agenda items, and it looks like we have one person signed up for that, Nancy Marnie.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, my name is Nancy Marnie. I live on Euclid Avenue, Bristol, Virginia. I am a property owner, I'm a citizen, I do pay my taxes. Gentlemen, as this council moves forward in its decision-making process, I would urge you, I would urge you, do not let the city become a toy. Make your decisions within the proper context. Think ahead. Just because you want to do something for one place here, that's one thing, but remember, if someplace over here has the same title, it has the same privileges. You must remember that there are consequences to every decision you make, and sometimes the consequences are far outweighing anything positive you think you've done, and then you end up looking stupid. So, be careful, gentlemen, do not let this city become anyone's toy, no one's toy. Now, there is one word, one word, that can keep this city out of trouble and keep this council out of trouble 99% of the time, and that one word is no.
Thank you. So, looking down the list here, I do have someone else signed up for an item that's not on the agenda otherwise, Jackie Knopfler.
I'll get started here. Jackie Knopfler, 21, got the circle. Pastor Castle, thank you. Community church, to the mayor, to the board. It's good to see so many people come out for whatever reason you see that when it's an issue, they come out for. I want to reiterate from last night's meeting at the school board, I would have loved to have seen a great number there when it pertaining to the schools. We've come to, came to an agreement that we will get started with our immediate needs. That was applauded throughout the community earlier this morning from people that contacted myself. It was good to say that we've come, we can begin here, we can start now, use the money that's already been allocated out, get the schools fixed now for safety. In case something was to happen to our schools, at least we can say we were in the process of trying to protect our children. Handicap accessibility 2019, but we're working on it, we're working to get, make that happen. The other question was, I didn't think that you was going to follow through on, but you did, was you, we've already given you money, are you going to use the money for what we allocated out for, or are you going to take the money and use it for something else? It appears that we agreed to go ahead and use the money for what we've already allocated out for, for one thing, it's going to be used for something else. But then, the school board will be able to come back and re-probate or re-something, get more money from city council for this and that. Keep in mind, they have $800,000, and I don't want us, like someone has already said, I don't want us to be used, be pulling money from the city when they already have money that can be used.
Thank you very much. All right. Item one on the agenda, joint proclamation with Bristol, Tennessee to proclaim September 15th through 21st, 2019 as Child Passenger Safety Week, and September 22nd, 2019 as Buckle Up for Life Day. Staff report.
Give me just a second, I've lost it in my...
You have three minutes.
Start counting. Hold on a second.
180, 179, 178.
Counsel, this is a joint proclamation with Bristol, Tennessee to proclaim September 15th through the 21st, 2019 as Child Passenger Safety Week, and September 22nd, 2019 as Buckle Up for Life Day. Child passenger safety technicians and instructors put their knowledge to work by conducting child safety checks where parents and caregivers receive hands-on assistance with proper use of child restraint systems and safety belts. The cities of Bristol, Virginia, and Tennessee wish to encourage parents and caregivers to implement best practices for traveling safely with children, including the proper installation and use of car seats. Child safety while traveling can be accomplished with a car seat inspection, ensuring that children are riding in the correct seat for their age and size. The cities encourage all citizens to help reduce injuries and the tragic loss of life by buckling up themselves and their children every trip, every time.
All right, thank you. Reading a proclamation, do you want to do that, or you want me to do that?
Your call, Mayor.
I'll go ahead. All right. Proclamation designating car seat, car seat safety week. Whereas children are our future and it's the responsibility of parents and caregivers to keep America's children safe, and whereas car seats are required by law for children traveling in motor vehicles, and whereas research analyzed by Cincinnati Children's Hospital Medical Center shows that in the United States only one in four child car seats are properly installed, and whereas research shows when installed and used correctly, child safety seats decrease the risk of fatal injury by 71% among infants, 54% among toddlers, and 45% among children aged four to eight, and whereas parents and guardians must make sure that children aged 12 and under always ride in the backseat buckled up in properly installed child safety seats, and a rear-facing child seat should never be placed in the front seat of a motor vehicle equipped with a passenger airbag, and whereas Bristol, Tennessee, and Virginia encourage parents and caregivers to implement best practices for traveling safely with children, whereas the cities of Bristol, Tennessee, and Virginia are committed to working closely with our partners and safety advocates such as Buckle Up for Life to help make the kind of choices that will keep children alive and safe, and whereas children riding in the right seat of their, in the right sized seat for their age and size can be accomplished by a car seat inspection that ensures the safety of a child while traveling. Therefore, be resolved that we, Margaret Fire Robbin and Neil Osborne, the mayors of Bristol, Tennessee, and Virginia, do hereby proclaim the week of September 15th through 21st, 2019 as Child Passenger Safety Week, and the day of September 22nd, 2019 as Buckle Up for Life Day. We encourage all citizens to help reduce injuries and the tragic loss of life by buckling up themselves and their children every trip, every time. And I just want to recognize a couple of people who are in attendance for this. We have Samuel Jones from Bristol's Promise in here, Melanie Fleener from the Bristol, Virginia Fire Department, Lieutenant Justin Mullins from Bristol, Tennessee Fire Department, and we have Mayor Fire Robbin here. All right, so I'm looking for a motion and a second on adopting the proclamation.
I move that, I move that we adopt the proclamation.
Second.
All right, so, motion from Mr. Hartley and a second from Mr. Farnham. If the clerk would, is there any discussion on this at all? Clerk will call the roll, please.
Farnham.
Yes.
Mumpower.
Yes.
Wingard.
Yes.
Hartley.
Yes.
Osborne.
Yes.
Do you want to do a picture or anything on this, sir?
If you have some questions, you can.
Yeah, let's do it.
We're taking a picture.
Item two, joint public hearing for zoning map amendment application number one, 2019, Long Crescent Road. And again, I'm going to go down, I'm just going to go down the list and call your all's names in the order you're signed up, so if you can keep it to the three-minute guideline, it would be great. They will. All right, so we're going to go ahead and open our public hearing, and if the planning commission chair would open their public hearing.
Oh, but the planning commission's public hearing.
All right, so, staff report.
Mayor and council members and chairman and planning commission members, the community development department has received a zoning map amendment, also known as a rezoning for, application from Long Crescent LLC to rezone three parcels totaling approximately 19 acres from R1A, single-family residential, to B3, intermediate business. The property is identified as parcel ID number 221A2, 221A3, and 261A6A. The subject property is currently undeveloped, and the applicant slash property owner is proposing a campground RV park, which comes under the term of overnight recreational development in the city zoning ordinance. This type of development is allowed by right only in the B3 and A districts. Comments have been requested for city, from city and BVU staff, and a preliminary staff report has been prepared to address the application. In accordance with state and city code, a joint public hearing with the planning commission and the city council is required prior to any action by the planning commission who would give a recommendation, or the city council who would vote to make a decision on the application. Public notices regarding the public hearing were published twice in the two consecutive week issues of the Bristol Herald Courier. All adjoining property owners were notified by certified mail, and the property was posted with signage regarding the upcoming public hearing. And the planning commission and city council, as the mayor has said, will hear comments from the public and will take no action until subsequent meetings. I do have a few slides that you all had in your packet with the staff report, but this is the location of the property. This shows the three parcels outlined, one in yellow, and the other two are part of the requests are also outlined in purple there. The zoning map shows the current zoning B3, the R1A zoning, and then the outlined subject Some photos, real quick here, to show the property taken from Long Crescent Road headed in the west direction. It is heavily wooded, as you can see. And then, also, trying to get a little bit different angles, still, it's kind of hard to get scope of the property being 19 acres from close up, so these were taken at different angles across the interstate. And this are a couple photos on the site, there's two entrances to the property, and this is a view on the left from one of those entrances on Long Crescent Road with the interstate to the right, and then a view looking south on the property. We always require with a rezoning application, a concept, conceptual site plan for what is proposed. This is what was provided by the applicant. This in no way means this is what would be if it's rezoned, finally approved, because there's a lot of steps that the applicant would have to go through to meet the standards for an RV park and for other engineering permits, but it's just a concept at this And also to say that in any rezoning, it does change the permitted uses on the property. So, from changing R1A to B3, it's not just to allow the campground, but it would allow all the permitted uses listed in that section of the ordinance. I know that's kind of small, but those are the permitted uses in B3. Just the process for considering zoning map amendment, as I said before, the public hearing was advertised as required by state code, and this is the joint public hearing today. The planning commission would consider their recommendation at their next regular meeting, which is next Monday, excuse me, Monday. City council would consider action as early as September 24th if the planning commission makes a recommendation. Just to note, there are other permits that would be required for the proposed development through the engineering department, site construction plan approval, land disturbing grading permit, erosion control plan, stormwater management, and a building permit for new buildings. I think that's my report.
Thank you very much. All right, so, public comment.
All right, I have an announcement.
Oh, go ahead.
For a full disclosure, I want to disclose that I am not a member of Long Crescent LLC. However, my wife, and my daughters, and my son-in-laws are the members of Long Crescent LLC. My only affiliation with it is by blood and marriage. I have sustained from any and all action through this city process. I have commented none to anybody and have no plans of doing so, but for full disclosure, this Long Crescent LLC is my family.
All right, thank you. All right, public comment, I'm just going to go down the list. If I mispronounce your name, I apologize in advance. So, and just come on up when I call your name, Lynda Waldron?
I am Lynda Waldron, and my husband Eugene and I live at 1737 Long Crescent. The rezoning property borders our front yard. Tomorrow, we will have lived there for 32 years, and we enjoy our scenic view from the front of the house. We also own a property on 517 Metta Drive, so this rezoning, it has a double effect on us. I'd like to point out a couple of things that I noticed errors in your staff report. You said that the mobile home park that existed up into the mid-2000s, but we moved there in 87, there were few mobile homes in place, but none were occupied, and they were removed in the early 1990s. Also, you said that there would be no adverse impacts on natural resources if the proposed rezoning is allowed. Well, this track and neighboring properties is full of wildlife. We have deer, wild turkey, fox, coyotes, and all other kinds of wildlife, so we do not want to see their habitat destroyed. Secondly, rezoning this property is not compatible with your own Bristol's comprehensive plan. In fact, it moves in the complete opposite direction. The plan states on page 32, titled Future Land Use, that single-family detached homes are still alone, are standalone housing units with one unit per partial. They are the predominant land use within Bristol. And on the next page, 33, it says the land use category states again, single-family detached residential areas include standalone housing units with one unit per partial. It is the predominant land use in Bristol and will remain so. So, on page 39 of the plan, under the residential areas framework plan, objective number four says residential quality life, safeguard neighborhoods from incompatible industrial or commercial uses. This rezoning is incompatible with the health and the safety of Long Crescent neighborhood and the comprehensive plan. The city spent many hours and costs in developing this plan and uses it to market Bristol. Is this a meaningless document? Bristol, Virginia is striving to attract more businesses to the area, but wouldn't reserving our neighborhoods to offer the most desirable housing, the best incentive? We need to follow the plan and preserve our residential areas instead of degrading them. Thank you for your time, and I appreciate your vote of no.
Thank you. Loretta Traer.
My address is 1735 Long Crescent Road. I have lived at 1735 Long Crescent Road for 37 years, and my property adjoins the site in question. As a real estate broker for over 28 years, licensed in three states, I certainly know as a result of the experience that those years bring, what an R1A zoning means to a resident and to a neighborhood. I also know what a B3 zone can do to devastate a neighborhood. No doubt this zoning change will greatly impact me personally, as my property value will significantly decline, as would my lifestyle and the safety and privacy I have enjoyed all these years. With that said, this is not just about me, this is about my neighborhood and beyond, about the entire city of Bristol. A downgrade of property values is going in the wrong direction. Downtown is a wonderful example of what upgrading looks like. We should all be so proud of the progress made in making downtown a showplace envied by many towns. We need to be farsighted and not shortsighted, only seeking quick revenue. I certainly don't see an RV park with details unknown to me what the city of Bristol needs and call it growth. We need more housing in the city that is upscale and a far better revenue source. I deal in high-end houses and know what newcomers want and expect. When it's not available, we lose them to the Virginian, to Abington, and to Bristol, Tennessee. Why do we need an RV park that will compete with the city's own Sugar Hollow? Sugar Hollow camping sites, whether tents or RVs, only have an occupancy rate of 50% in the summer, that's high season, with the only 100% occupancy one time a year for rhythm and roots. Any tax revenue derived from a new RV park will be offset by the loss of revenue from Sugar Hollow. I ask you councilmen to consider the long-term growth potential of Bristol and not settle for an entity that would downgrade the image of Bristol and devalue private properties. Please vote no on this zoning request.
So, next we've got Roy Andes. Go ahead.
Well, it looks like everything I was going to say has been covered, but I moved into Virginia Heights and loved the area in 1984, and I feel it's a very, I'm very satisfied, very desirable, it's a safe neighborhood, and they have great schools. And I was going to say the same thing about the 75 sites at Sugar Hollow. I don't think we need another, I've been to RV a lot in my life, and I want to be honest with you, I have worked in an RV, calling on post offices in a lot of small areas, and I look for a, either a city, or a state, or national park, I do not go into private parks. So, I did that for a number of years. So, I don't see why we need another RV park to compete with the 75 sites we have in Sugar Hollow, she covered that. And they've got more amenities there for kids and everything. Also, the wildlife habitat in the back of my house, which I, my backyard, I live at 257 Oakview Drive on a corner of Long Crescent, and it dead ends with the Clark and Traer property. And, I mean, I see all kinds of wildlife, it's unreal, there's a lot of wildlife back there, and I love it. So, of course, I've always felt that the city, you know, we, we're having a lot of financial problems, and we want to keep the, get the most we can for our money, and the city does have an obligation to make sure that the highest use of property to benefit the residents and the city... the residents and the city is the highest use that they possibly can get of a piece of property. And I agree that it should be some upscale homes in that area, and that would reduce the taxes. I believe that the name of the game is having taxes. If any of the property in that area there, which is some beautiful homes in that area, there's some 200, 300, 400, $500,000 homes, and a multimillion dollar home in that neighborhood there. So anytime that any of that value of property reduces, you reduce the tax, of course. So I feel that you need to get greater thought and discussion on this subject before anything is done. And that covers about everything. So I certainly appreciate my opportunity to talk to you about this.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, next person is Carolyn, and I can't read your last name. Come on up.
My name is Carolyn Akers, and I would like to give you a little history. My grandparents and my parents, myself, my children, had been on that hill for almost 100 years. The first house on top of Long Crescent was my grandparents'. They helped build the road going up on the hill to Long Crescent. I just can't, and up until, it used to be Washington County, and then they finally was annexed. As a matter of fact, I would have went to John Battle, but then they annexed, and I had to finish up at Virginia High, which my parents had to pay tuition, which wasn't fair, but anyway. We liked to never, after they annexed, we liked to never got water up on the hill to my father. Years, it took years because the city wouldn't put water up there. It got to the point to where my father was having to haul water to flush his commodes, come to my house every night to take a shower. Finally, we got water up there. You still do not have sewer up on Long Crescent, up on top of the hill. I can't believe that you're considering this as a business. Very little property in the city of Bristol has as much beautiful mountains, wildlife, and you want to destroy this? This is a beautiful neighborhood. A lot of people would like to live on Long Crescent. And I beg of you, I beg of you, don't turn this, leave this residential. If you do have to do something, would you please consider 55 and over, maybe patio homes? That's what this town needs. You know, I know several people that would love to have a patio home. But don't, don't make this a campground. When I look out my, when you look out, and you stand up there, and you look, and you see all the beauty, we don't want to look down on top of RVs and campgrounds. You know, that is not right. That's too nice a neighborhood. This neighborhood offers, you know, you're close to schools, churches, post office, shopping centers, grocery stores, restaurants. Perfect location for elderly people to live on that location. Please don't consider downgrading Long Crescent into an RV park, a trailer park, or campers. That would be the worst thing you could do. That is probably one of the most prestige neighborhoods in the city of Bristol, and I'm sure you would agree. And all this hard-working people worked hard, you know, keep your property up. So don't, you know, don't downgrade us. And also, if you put in something like that, are you gonna have 24-hour security at that park? Because that's what it's gonna take. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next up. Next up is Jeff Wilson.
Jeff Wilson, I live at 1736 Long Crescent Road, directly across the street from where the property is being proposed. I know you don't take questions, but I have a question. I've heard rumors, and maybe the Planning Commission can address this. Is there any plans to close Long Crescent? Because that kind of takes me on my speech of what I'm gonna talk about, which is safety. I agree with everything that's been stated before, there's obvious reasons why, but I'm concerned about safety. As you come out Lee Highway, it's almost impossible sometimes to turn left, to go up to the falls, or exit 7 to shop, or get on the interstate because of traffic coming off the interstate, trying to get to McDonald's or to Arby's, going through the wrong entrances and everything. You just have to wait for the light to stop you. And then just go to the middle, and then try to merge into traffic. You start bringing RVs in there, campers, Class A buses? You're gonna turn, you're gonna make that turn? You're gonna have accidents there. It doesn't take a safety engineer to know that that's, that that's gonna happen. They're gonna lose their patience, they're gonna be backed up, and they're gonna make that turn. There's just not enough room there. And a stoplight, there's enough stoplights on the highway as there is. So that's a major, that's a major concern for me. As traffic's coming from the east or coming from north, that's where the GPS will route them. If you're coming up from Knoxville from the southwest or Johnson City, GPS will route you off of 381, or Johnson City, obviously Bristol Highway, Luntre Parkway, Commonwealth, onto Glen Way, then you're out to, straight out past Virginia High or Washington Lee, where you go down and hit Valley Drive. Either way, you're gonna merge back on to Long Crescent. And coming up the, I guess it'd be the south or the western part of the slope over there, I'm sure most of you are familiar with how narrow that is. Extremely narrow. We can barely pass two cars on that road. You usually have to stop. And you have to try to find a wide place. So what if an RV comes up? Am I supposed to, I'm stopped at the top of the hill? Am I supposed to back up the hill? I'm not backing up until law enforcement comes out and tells me to, I guess, but they're gonna have to stop traffic at the top of the hill because, you know, it's a blind spot. That's a major safety issue. You have, the high school kids coming across through there all the time, they use that as a convenience route, as well as all the citizens back here. The wintertime, that's covered with ice and snow, it does not melt. That's one of the last places to melt up there. We use the other way as an entrance to get up there. We don't dare go up that other facing in the wintertime. So just from the state, the safety concerns, and I don't want RVs and trailers backing into our driveways, trying to turn around, knocking over our columns, into our yards, as they've done many times before, and that will happen. And I don't care how many signs you put up, no trucks come up this way, they're gonna ignore it. So that's all I have to say, but please vote no.
Thank you very much. All right, next person, Ken Salz.
Ken Salz, 335 Meadow Drive, Bristol, Virginia. First of all, I'd like to thank you for letting me speak. I'm a 42-year resident, lived at the same address on Meadow Drive. This is the first thing out of all the years, and I've watched some of you guys grow up. I've coached some of you in baseball, and I've played against some of them. But Bristol is my home. That sign that says it's a good place to live, all you have to do is go away from here to big cities somewhere, and you realize how fortunate we are to live in Bristol, Virginia. I think this is, I'm twofold purpose here tonight. I represent Kingsway Baptist Church. A lot of our folks cross that hill, coming to church every Sunday. And as already has been stated, it's a narrow road, and to be perfectly honest with you, the city has done a very poor job of keeping it up. There's erosion problems. There's erosion problems on the interstate side of Long Crescent that are repeatable. Every big rain we get, we have erosion there. All it takes is a couple thousand dollars worth of rip, rap rock, and you can fix that. But I've been there 42 years, and I've never seen it happen. I'm also, I'm concerned about what might go there besides an RV park. There's a couple of things mentioned in your list here that concern me. Places of amusement. Now, what amuses me might not be what amuses you. Public or private clubs. Now, when I go to big cities, I see a lot of private clubs. That's not conducive for my church family. That's not conducive for me and my grandchildren. I ask you to vote no. It's a common sense issue. It's just common sense. Thank you.
All right, Ms. Marnie, you're signed up for item two as well? Come on up.
Mr. Mayor, Members of Council, my name is Nancy Marnie. I live on Euclid Avenue. I'm a property owner. I do pay my taxes. One of the biggest investments anybody makes in a lifetime is in a home. Think of your own situation. What else have you ever invested in that cost more than your home? Now, when a person makes an investment like that, that investment needs to be protected. Bristol, Virginia is not noted for protecting much of anything. Unfortunately, one of the things that has been lacking in this city is proper housing. Too much of our land, in ratio to the size of the population, has been taken up with low-income housing, from which the city does not get any tax, and little else in terms of city spending. I think this needs to be looked at. I was talking with a man within the last two weeks, and he asked me a question that I'm gonna pass on to you. He said, Nancy, let me ask you something. If I wanted to build a $400,000, $500,000 house and move to Bristol, where could I build that house? And I said, don't ask me. I said, they've been messing around so much with the zoning in this city, you might put that house on a piece of property and spend $500,000, $600,000 on it, and the next day you'd have a filling station on one side and a quick stop on the other. I don't know what to tell you. And he said, then I'm not gonna do it. I said, neither would I. Now, you talk about wanting to bring in business. Where the Sam Hill do you think these people are gonna live, in a trailer on Long Crescent You think they're gonna pull an RV in there and stay for a week and leave and come back? Where the Sam Hill do you think they're gonna live? The use of the land, folks, it is an inappropriate use of the land. We are noted for that. It is not the highest and the best use of that land. People have built their houses there, made their life. Give us some food for thought, and food for the soul and the eyes. I don't see that in an RV or a trailer. Let people enjoy the homes they have spent a lifetime living in, paying for, enjoying. Use it for the highest and best use. That is not what this is.
Thank you. All right, next person is Frankie Smith.
I'm Frankie Smith, and I live at 313 Shipley Drive. Back of my property, next to the Traers and Waldrons, will be the closest to this RV facility. Most of the folks here I've worked for, or know me, or know what I do, and most of the people at the city, which city's been great to me. And I'm all about stuff looking pretty and looking nice for the city. And if I were coming from Tennessee and topped the hill there, 381, and the first thing I saw was an RV park, I'd probably reconsider staying in Bristol, or going to exit 5, or going to exit 7 to shop. I would wonder, you know, what kind of neighborhoods and things it is. I agree a lot with what everyone else has said. You know, we want the best for the property, and we do. If somebody wanted to build a nice home here, I don't know, we're really limited, and some of that property right in there is the best property that's left. And if, if we take away that, there's not anywhere in Bristol, Virginia, you're almost forcing people to go to Bristol, Tennessee to build. So, you know, think about that when you rezone that, because it will greatly affect who and what can build there.
Thank you very much. All right, next person is Danny Waller?
Wallace.
Wallace, I'm sorry. Come on up.
My name's Daniel Wallace. I live at 1600 Long Crescent, at the corner of Long Crescent and Meadow. I got a copy of the agenda from the website and looked over it, and I just hoped that you would put the, the concerns of the residents in the Long Crescent neighborhoods above any corporate entity. I think there's plenty of points in your staff report that would speak against rezoning. Some of them I might make a comment on. One thing I'd like to, I've just observed, in getting to this point, it says here, "Two previous measures were proposed and voted into law by City Council." That brought us to this point. Was there, they did not require a public hearing and notice of adjoining property owners? Is one question I have there. And then, on July 9th, a new section of city code for the overnight recreation development and changes to Section 5109 to allow this type of development was permitted, was there, was there not a public notice, a hearing, notice to property owners on, for the July 9th where you adopted this? I'm talking in hindsight there, but it got me to questioning it. And when this was put forth, was any financial accountability put forth by the developer that wants to do this? Like I say, I think the residents, the, that are speaking here tonight against this, people that have lived there for years, should be given first consideration above any corporate developer. Thumbed through some more things, and, you know, your report talks about the road at the top of Long Crescent, going from 22 feet to 18 feet, and there's a deep ravine right there. I'm surprised the guardrails haven't fallen off. Then if this goes in... And then if this goes in, is the developer gonna come in and want to grade that road out and tear out the beauty of this ravine and all the, to make a, a wide road down through so an RV can get down through there? Says there's no public sewer serving the property. So I don't wanna pay for a sewer. I'm gonna go in to a property that's being developed by somebody that privately owns it. It's not my expense.
I hate to cut you off, but, but your time is up, but I appreciate your, appreciate your comments.
Okay. I could go on for another 10, 15 minutes.
Thank you very much. All right. Next on the agenda is Chris Horner.
My name is Chris Horner. I live at 535 Belair Lane. I have 27 acres that is just, the road goes along Crescent between my property and the proposed property to rezone. We've had that land in my family for 50 years. I bought it from my father 30 years ago, who bought it 20 years before that for the exact same reason. It was a beautiful piece of property that had a beautiful view of the city. It had great woods to have the wildlife in, and we've enjoyed it for that, and we've spent a lot of money buying the property, fixing it up through the years, just as the other neighbors have. If you went through there, you would see all the improvements that have been made through the years. And we pay a lot of taxes for that right to have that privacy, which is the main thing that we have enjoyed during this time. You know, we're not selfish people or, or rude people, but the thought of having, you know, 25 RVs pull up in any night right next to my property, and 50 or 100 people out in their tents, or playing their music, or cooking out, or whatever, is not what any of us bought that property for. We, we've enjoyed and have improved that area. And the privacy was the main reason we stayed there. Several of the things I was gonna say obviously have been covered by other people, but the safety thing, I think, is, is an issue that, the entrance to my garden, where I have a building, where I have a rototiller and a mower and all that, because I try to keep it very neat, is right across from the exact, where you have the signs there. And, and where it would be developed. So I travel that every day. I have a large garden. I tend it. And I come over that hill every day. I measured the other day from the inside of the white lines where you're supposed to drive, and it was 15 foot, seven inches. I've got a seven-foot wheelbase on my SUV, and anybody else that lives up there, during the wintertime, they would obviously have to have it, or you couldn't even get from Spring Garden up there. So you got 14 of that 15, seven, taken with two cars. I have, for 30 years that I've lived there, have never been able just to pass another car without either stopping or going over in the ditch or obviously hugging the guardrail. When I go up there at a UPS truck, or, or FedEx truck, or come down there, I'm going into Dr. Crockett's driveway as fast as I can, or the rental's or something, because you ain't gonna get by it. And he's not gonna stop. So it's tough. Can you imagine what an RV coming down there into Spring Garden would be like? If you were coming up that hill, you would have to back down, but if you're backing down, realize that is such a steep incline that people are accelerating and hitting that pedal coming up around the curve, you would back into it. You've got four adjoining driveways that are right at the apex, the top of that hill, that if they come out, you have blind spots everywhere. It's an accident waiting to happen. I mean, it just is. And the other thing which is, we, we've said, most everybody's said, i- is the wildlife, and I guess that's the personal part. I've got trail cabs on, on some trees on my property, because there's not a day goes by that I don't have two or three deer walking through my yard. I know they're there at night because they eat everything I plant. But they're there, the turkeys are there. It's a beautiful sight. Now, man's gonna wind out over the animals, and we, we all know that, but that's where they bed down.
Hate to interrupt you, but we gotta, we gotta cut you off. We, time's up. But thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Appreciate you having me.
All right. Logan Lindberg.
My name is Logan Lindberg. I live at 401 Belair Lane, right at the corner of Long Crescent and Belair. And once I kind of found out about this, you know, I felt like I needed to voice some concerns on behalf of myself, and evidently I wasn't the only one in the community. The great turnout, and I think it just really speaks to what great family this neighborhood is all, all about, wind guards included. Y'all have been great neighbors, and everybody. I mean, from the time that I started, 1999, in the neighborhood, I'd go around rollerblade, ride bikes, and just have a ball. Great family neighborhood, so much so that my first house, I couldn't really afford a house in the neighborhood at the time for what was available, so I moved somewhere else, and the neighbors and stuff that I saw that we had were just kind of undesirable. And my wife and I were having our daughter, who's about to celebrate her fifth birthday, and we wanted to move back to the neighborhood, you know, where I grew up, and we've lived there for five years now. And the, the reasons why we really like it are, they get out and walk, kids play, you see people walking all the time, and some of the stuff about the routing really bothered me, just because, you know, people are gonna come the opposite way, and I don't care whether the road's narrow, the road's widened. It does mean an increase in traffic in that right, kind of crosscut around the center of the neighborhood that, that does impact, you know, the kids out playing. You know, we drive it every day. We drive down Meadow Drive, see the kids playing basketball. We know to slow down. We know to, you know, to be careful around the neighborhood. So that's definitely a concern. Also, the sound, you know, you cut away not only the wildlife, the plants and everything, but your sound, you know, I'm sure that it's gonna have an impact, because that acts almost like an insulated barrier between us and 81. I mean, you, you can drive by on 81, and I can say, I, I live right back there, and you wouldn't know. I mean, it's a beautiful, beautiful landscape that, that just kind of hugs the neighborhood there that I would hate to see go. And also, I mean, an RV park, if, you know, if that's what went there, that's what goes there, but in rezoning it for B3, I just think it's a slippery slope, because, you know, say, it goes there for a few years, and maybe something happens and something else comes in that's allowed. Once you make that decision, it really opens the door for many other things, and I plan on being in the neighborhood the rest of my life, putting, you know, I put down roots and wanna raise my family there, wanna see my kids play out in the street, ride bikes, and run around in the neighborhood, just like I did when I was younger. So, you know, I, I really feel like I have a different perspective, despite having less hair, it appeared, than anybody else has came up here. I, I am a younger citizen in the neighborhood and, and don't wanna see it go away. The neighborhood that I know and love, and, and really, I just want to tell everybody else here that I appreciate you coming out and fighting for everything we have.
Thank you. Next person is Don Waterman.
I'm Don Waterman, 201 Millsap Street. I also, and 14 acres at 420 Pinecrest Lane. I built across the interstate from these people, because I tried to buy some property up there and couldn't, couldn't get him, any of them to park with it. And I've still got 14 acres up, across the interstate on the other side. R1A is the most restrictive zoning in the state, in the city of Bristol, Virginia. I know this because I was chairman of the planning commission in the 90s for four years. I was also on Mount Rogers, the joint planning commission for Bristol, Virginia and Tennessee. I will tell you, going from an R1A to a B3, and I've still got 14 acres, I sure would like to make that multifamily, since I've done a few of those already. So consequently, that is a big jump. Maybe to a B1 would make sense, but B3, and you have that listing of things that, that can, it can end up. Now, maybe the RV park works. Nine times out of 10, it might not work. And if it doesn't work, then basically, somebody will be selling that property, and the other zoning requirements would fall into effect. Now, people might not be upset with the B1, but they're sure gonna be upset with the B3. It just absolutely makes no sense to go from R1A, the most restricted residential deal out there, to a B3, which is three, there's B1, 2, and 3. So this is, the, the next step from there is obviously manufacturing, that'd be M1. That's how close B3 is to M1. And there's a good possibility that some manufacturing might wanna buy that property and rezone it. And obviously, the planning commission doesn't see any problem with it, unlike we did. We, as a matter of fact, when we rewrote the six-year plan, we changed the designation so no more mobile homes or manufactured homes could be built in Bristol, Virginia. And that, I think you heard earlier, somebody said that 1990, the mobile homes disappeared? Well, that's probably why. So, an RV is a temporary mobile home. That's all it is. And you don't know what you're gonna get when they come in to spend the night at those places. So I'm definitely against it. I don't live in that area. I live across the way. But it's probably the dumbest thing that I've ever seen in my life to go to a B3.
All right. Next person up is Pam Kerr.
Hello, gentlemen. I'm Pamela Kerr. I live at 423 Santa Monica Road, on the top of the hill, below the Crockett's. Have 10.6 acres there. Been there 13 years. Lived off Long Crescent for 20 other years at 836 Long Crescent. So I have been in the area for a while. I hadn't planned on talking, but I had decided that I had to speak up. I am appalled by this whole thing, to tell you the truth. We decided to build one more time in Bristol, Virginia. We love Bristol, Virginia, and the Crockett's had some land, which they sold to us. It took us four and a half years to complete our house and rode up to it. My husband worked like a dog and went every day to oversee it. If he were here, Joseph Kerr, who established Kerr-Boswell, which I am now running, if he were here, he would be up here speaking. He's a much better speaker than I am. But he would be appalled by all this. I ride that road all the time. To go to Abington, where my daughter's in a group home, to go to Exit 7, to go to everything. So I know how bad shape that road is in. Every time I get on it, I'm wary, am I gonna make it around that curve down there and not be in the ditch, especially in the winter? Now, if you haven't come out behind Shoney's, out into the road and tried to access from there, you have not lived. You need to try it. Don't make decisions without riding that road and going there about 5 o'clock in the afternoon. Every one of the fast food places is up through there. You're trying to go across. You cannot possibly get across, if you wanna make a left. And then if you do and go out into the middle, someone comes off the interstate, and I did ask someone on this, the coun, city council years ago, if we couldn't put a stop sign coming off the interstate, and they said that was against the law. It's a yield. You got to see how fast the people come off to appreciate it. I know some don't slow down much below 40 to 50 when they come around off the interstate. They just keep coming. We're trying to get out of the road. We might get halfway out there, and all of a sudden look up, and here's this car that hasn't even slowed one ounce once it hit that downward spiral, and they come close to hitting you. And guess who they're angry with? They're angry with the person that had the audacity to pull out of that road. So I fight it all the time. I'm, I'm that road every day. And I fight that, trying to get out in that traffic and get out in the middle, and I have seen it over and over, close wrecks. It is going to be a nightmare, not to speak of that steep hill in the winter, trying to get the RVs in and out. It's just inconceivable to me that this could even be considered for safety. But we did not build and give our lives to that house on the hill. My husband is deceased as of a year and a half ago. We didn't give it to see this happen, to see our neighborhood trash like this. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Next person is Becky Evenden.
Hi, I'm Becky Evenden. I live at 311 Meadow Drive. I'm overwhelmed by the number of comments tonight and trying to decide what I can add that is, is new. I echo what Mr. Salz said about concerns about the slippery slope of rezoning. I'm not a big fan of rezoning to begin with, but to see it chip away at a residential area is of concern to me. I echo the concerns about safety for the RVs on the roads, and especially turning down Meadow, down Oakview, around the little curve going towards State Street, United Methodist Church on Long Crescent. Those seem very difficult for large vehicles, such as RVs, to navigate. I was also very interested to hear from people like Ms. Taylor, who live near, live in that area up on Long Crescent on the hill and see all the wildlife. One of the concerns that we had as a family was just knowing that it's a campground and there's gonna be the ability to have fires. Would that increase the fire risk to one of the kind of few large-acre forested areas that we have in the city of Bristol? And also, would that increased fire risk affect our homeowner's insurance? And the last thing that I hadn't really planned to mention tonight, but I was talking to Mr. Eads about this earlier today. It does concern me that there was no disclosure earlier that a city councilman's family was the owner of this property, and my understanding is that probably all laws were followed. But I would hate to see that become a pattern for us as a city. I feel like it's, in order to have the trust of your community, you wanna be as open and disclosing as much as you can upfront to your community so that they feel like they can trust you as leaders. And I would like to see that sort of a level of disclosure and trust going forward in our, in our community for sure, so I think that's all I wanna say on that. But thank you for being here and for listening to us.
Thank you very much. Next person, next person is Catherine Wilson Thompson. You're gonna pass? All righty. Thank you. All right. John Weigel.
John Weigel, 32 Shipley Drive. I've been at my address for 32 years. Love the neighborhood, love the neighbors. Don't have much to add. My concerns have been well-covered. I would like to thank, to thank all the people for taking their time and doing the research they've done. I've had some education here tonight, and I certainly urge a no vote. Thank you.
Thank you. Richard Robinson.
I'm Richard Robinson. I live at 30 Trail Road, near the Cypress Road, and, and I'm against the rezoning. And I like to add that seven years ago, there was a mobile, I mean, a RV park up on Lee Highway, and it was bulldozed under. And I guess it was no important. And I guess it was no importance, so it's no importance now to have one. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Next person is Mr. Kirksey.
Mr. Mayor, and members of council, and Mr. Chairman, members of the Planning Commission, my wife, Terry, and I oppose the requested rezoning. More than a decade ago, we purchased a nice home on Trail Road, 28 Trail Road. And we've made some, a substantial investment in that property, and we have continued, I can tell you, to make a substantial investment in that property with upgrades and the like. I've given some careful thought to this proposal. I've had conversations at times with some of the individuals that have spoken here tonight. And I can tell you that I've heard from far more people than have even spoken here tonight about this, and I suspect many of you have as well. You've heard from people here tonight that have lived in this community for decades, decade after decade after decade. And yet, in August of last year, an LLC decided to purchase a small piece of R1A property and to, what they now would propose to have is an incursion and an intrusion and an infringement into the lives and investments and residences of all these individuals. And with all due respect, that's just not right. That is just not right. These individuals' rights, these individuals' investments, their lives, and some of these individuals have spoken with some deep felt emotion about it. And I would say to you that you did not take one minute of time to consider those individuals. And that is not right. The largest piece of R1A property that is undeveloped abuts this property that you are requesting to be rezoned. This city has very limited land available. And the largest piece of undeveloped R1A property is right against this piece of property. It's been suggested that we need to have additional housing, additional upscale or more valued price-wise housing. Well, certainly, to have an RV park adjacent to it would defeat that, no doubt. So, common sense tells you this should not be done. Traffic issues, safety issues, and the like. The bottom line to all this is, this property needs to stay where it is, is R1A, and remain in that fashion. Mr. Wingard, I respectfully request that you and your family consider withdrawing your request, having heard what you hear tonight. That failing, members of the Planning Commission, you should decline the request. And city council, you should do so likewise. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next person is Candy Snodgrass.
Mr. Mayor, Councilman, I am Candy Snodgrass. I live at 1011 Piedmont Avenue and have lived there for the last 36 years. I don't think I can add anything to what anybody has already said, except to say, Long Crescent and Spring Garden are very, very important areas to the city of Bristol, Virginia. We are probably some of the highest tax property payers in the city of Bristol. The last thing you all want to do is shoot yourselves in the foot and have our property devalued. But more than that, we don't need this kind of development in that area. And I find it hard to believe that the city would actually consider spending money that they can't find to spend for schools on sewers and roads for a development of an RV or a camping park. Thank you.
Thank you. Next person is Julie Thomas.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, City Council, Planning Commission. My name is Julie Thomas. My husband, Paul, and I live at 733 Windmill Circle. Our property directly joins the Citizen Cemetery. We have owned that property 35 years. We are both fourth-generation Bristolians. My parents happened to be here tonight, too. I'm really not good at speaking. I'm better at writing, but I'll try to convey. A little bit of history. First of all, I totally agree with what's been said. We have safety issues. We have, you know, devaluing of property issues. There's not a lot of property in Bristol, Virginia that we know of. I have had little snippets of word about that property. And I will tell you that I am here as the family spokesperson. My husband's grandfather, John Clark, developed that property, or bought the property, built on the top of the hill that Loretta Traer now lives in. And we own the property that Loretta doesn't have below there. I can tell you, there's been snippets of people saying that they're going to gobble up this land piece by piece. I can tell you, they're not. They're not. This property is not for sale. Dawn, this is probably some of the property that you wanted, and is not still for sale. We have children that would maybe like to come back into town, and maybe that's where they want to build. I'm actually not even a Virginia resident anymore. Paul and I are Jupiter, Florida residents. But we own, maintain, and pay a hell of a lot of property tax, probably more than anywhere in the city of Bristol. And it makes me mad that you're even considering this. And an option to this is to put a cul-de-sac at the end of the street? Not an option. Not an option. I would like for you all to go back and do some deep soul-searching. You want backwards. Backwards. Thank you. I vote no.
Thank you. All right. Next person is Paul Thomas.
I'm going to defer to what she says. I agree with everything it is. It's ridiculous. I would request a vote no.
Thank you. Terry Kirksey.
Yes, that's me. I don't have anything else to add. Everyone has said it all. We've all taken it apart and listened. We've got a lot of tax payers in the local streets. They own a lot of property, and they vote. We all are working together.
All right, thank you. Diana Hager.
I don't have anything else to add. I just want you to vote no. No, no, no.
Thank you. Rachel Kahler.
I don't have anything else to add. I don't have anything else to add. But I vote everyone no.
Thank you. All right. Ms. Hodgson? Thank you very much. Thank you. Our last person, yeah, our last person, Archer Parsons.
I'm going to thank the advocate. It's a real cost for sewer work to go into a place like that, and it's a whole lot of work in this city.
Thank you very much. All right. Before we, before we close the hearing, just, just to kind of give you a timeline of what we're doing here. So this, this was a public hearing, so we're not taking any votes tonight. What we're going to do, I'm going to ask the city staff to take all of the questions and concerns that you've had that have not been addressed and, and address them.
And if I may, some people have made some comments tonight in regards to that the city would be paying for roads and sewers. That's not the case. The city would not have any, no one has asked the city at this point to put any money into any of these, into this project. So I just want to get that out there right now. That's not something the city is, has been asked to do or would be willing to do at this point. And also, I know a lot, several people have made comments that we're considering something. This is just a normal course of action when an application is filed for a rezoning. It has to go before the Planning Commission. You have to have the joint hearing. And then it gets either approved or denied by the Planning Commission, then it comes to the city council. So this is just a normal plan of action, of how these things occur. It doesn't have anything to do that we've considered anything at this point or anything. It's just, anybody that would apply for a rezoning, this is the proper path that we'd have to take.
And so tell me again the date for the Planning Commission to consider this.
Monday, September 16th.
So pending the outcome of the Planning Commission's decision, we may look at this on September 24th, but we'll have notice that whether we're doing that or not.
What time on Monday, please?
It's at noon.
Where?
Here.
So if anyone didn't hear that, or they're watching online, so noon on Monday.
Monday, 16th.
Here at City Hall. So I'm going to go ahead and, again, thank everyone for coming out. I'm going to close the hearing and ask the Planning Commission to close their hearing.
Mr. Mayor, would it be appropriate at this time that I might ask the city staff provide some information similarly as you did? I would like to ask the city staff provide a list of the addresses of those who signed up with their addresses provided, so that we could see where we are getting feedback from relative to the property in question.
Can we do that?
If you have not signed up, could it be another sign-up sheet?
Well, I, I think that at least having the addresses that were provided will give us a significant amount of feedback that we did not have when the staff report was provided. And I think that will be helpful. After all, I suppose it's not appropriate at this time to give my, my thoughts on the matter. But I do appreciate that, and I believe those addresses will be helpful in informing our decision. Thank you.
Are you, is your hearing closed now?
I will now, unless there's any. I'll, I'll close the, the Planning Commission portion of the public hearing. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. So we are going to take a 10-minute recess before we go on to the rest of our agenda. If you all want to stay, I would love for you all to be here.
Close your hearing.
I closed my, we're closed. We're not closed over here. If you all want to stay for the rest of our agenda, I'd love for you all to, but if you don't, that's fine. We're going to take a 10-minute, 10-minute recess. All right. We're going to go ahead and reconvene the city council of September 10th, 2019. Item 3 on the agenda is a public hearing regarding the fiscal year 2018-2019 CDBG Consolidated Annual Performance and Evaluation. Open the public hearing. Staff report.
Counsel, this is a public hearing regarding the fiscal year 1819 CDBG Consolidated Annual Performance and Evaluation Report. The city of Bristol, Virginia is the annual recipient of federal funding through the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development. The entitlement monies may be spent to develop or sustain viable urban communities by providing decent housing and suitable living environment, and by expanding economic opportunities, principally for low and moderate-income persons. All entitlement monies received are dispersed through the city's Community Development Block Grant, CDBG program. The Consolidated Annual Performance and Evaluation Report for the city's CDBG program is an annual report of the city's prior years' use of this funding in carrying out its strategic plan and action plan. This report is being brought in front of the council for public comment prior to its submission to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development.
All right, thank you. Looks like no one has signed up for public comment on it, so I'm going to go ahead and close the hearing. Item 4 on the agenda is Presentation of Highlands Community Services Performance Contract. The Highlands CFO, Kathy Simpson, should be here.
Mr. Mayor, city council members, I'm Kathy Simpson, CFO with Highlands Community Services. Our new executive director of about three months, Rebecca Holmes, regrets she's not able to be here. She had to go to an executive director, statewide executive director meeting for CSPs in Richmond. So, but I have been here a few times over many years, so it's a pleasure to be back. The fiscal year 2020 performance contract that I believe you all received a copy of between Highlands Community Services, HCS, and the Department of Behavioral Health and Developmental Services, was approved by the HCS Board of Directors in June. Virginia Code requires that, following board approval, that it be approved by both the Bristol, Virginia City Council and the Washington County Board of Supervisors, the two jurisdictions that we serve. The contract defines the relationship between HCS and DBHDS and outlines the responsibilities of each of those parties as we deliver services to those in our community with mental illness, substance use disorders, and developmental disabilities. It outlines the scope of HCS services along with the populations to be served and provides conditions on the use of those resources. Exhibit A, which follows page 36 of the contract, contains details of the services to be provided by HCS during the year to an estimated 5,000 individuals in our community at a projected cost of $26.6 million. That's funded through state, federal, local dollars, and as well as fees for services and miscellaneous revenues, some contributions, things of that sort. The funding provided by Washington County and Bristol, Virginia is documented on page AF11 of Exhibit A, if you want to see that documentation. And you may have noticed the local match computation box on the bottom left of the front page of Exhibit A, which shows that we have a local matching percentage of 11.67%. We're mandated to maintain at least a 10% local match. The additional 11 contract exhibits, along with the administrative requirements document and so forth and so on, complete the full contract. And they provide more than enough requirements, guidance, mandates, and challenges to keep HCS management and staff on their toes. Several of those requirements and challenging activities include expanded data collection requirements, reporting, and analysis. Continuation of the STEP VA initiative, that stands for System Transformation Excellence and Performance. These are a variety of services that are, such as same-day access, where we get people into service basically the same day that they call, indicating they have a need. Outpatient services expansion, primary care screening for all of our consumers, and final design and launch of mobile crisis services. This is an effort that's going on across the state, and we are closely scrutinized in terms of how we're doing, meeting the objectives of these various programs. Navigating the new alternative transportation arrangement for individuals is another initiative going on at this time. And it will take some of the transportation burden off of our local law enforcement and provide a more therapeutic arrangement for people who need to be taken to the state hospital. Completing the first full year of operations for two new programs also, Jail Discharge Planning Program and our Crisis Intervention Team Assessment Center, also referred to as CTEC. The first new program there, the Jail Discharge Planning, is a regional grant endeavor focused on the four facilities of the Southwest Virginia Regional Jail Authority. We have discharge planners hired to work with inmates with serious mental illness to better prepare them for release and reduce recidivism. HCS has obtained approval to also make those services available at the Bristol City Jail. In collaboration with Sheriff Maples and the city council, the position that we've made available to the Bristol jail has been able to be expanded to full-time to also provide additional behavioral health consultation services to the facility, along with the discharge planning services. The second new program mentioned, the CTEC or Crisis Intervention Team Assessment Center, launched in June of 2019 under a partnership with the town police departments of Glade Spring, Damascus, and Abington. The Washington County Sheriff's Department the Washington County Sheriff's Department, and the Bristol, Virginia Sheriff's Department, and the Bristol, Virginia City Police. This collaboration allows for legal handoff of individuals experiencing behavioral health crisis to CTEC staff, including dedicated law enforcement staff, allowing the law enforcement officers to return to their jurisdictions and minimize staffing impact on local departments. That's just a, two examples of, uh, some of the newest things going on at Highlands. For continued operations and for each of these collaborative programs mentioned above, we appreciate your ongoing support and respectfully request your approval of our FY 2020 performance contract.
All right, do we have any questions for? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, uh, item five is Initial Presentation and Review of Revised Zoning Ordinances. Staff report.
Mayor and council members, I just wanted to introduce, uh, some of the work the planning commission has been working on for the last two years. Um, and that is to, um, go through our entire zoning ordinance with the city and review it and, um, recommend changes. So why are we doing this? Just, um, I'm going to cover that real quickly and then just summarize a little bit of the, the, the bigger points of what we recommend, what the planning commission has, um, been working on to make revisions. This would all, of course, need to, um, go forward at some point to a joint public hearing before it was ever adopted, but you all are just now seeing it. You've gotten a copy or you had a copy presented to you in July, that document. And, uh, what we were looking at doing as far as the work the planning commission did was to better conform with our newer comprehensive plan, um, comply with the Code of Virginia and recent case law, clarify and streamline the administrative process, update and include missing definitions and terms, and improve organization for ease of use as we're kind of the object, objectives. So as I said, we've been going, uh, through it. We have had numerous work sessions and, you know, with turnover of some of the planning commissioners, it's taken a while. And you can see also because there's 16 chapters of our zoning code, which is, um, not, uh, unlike any other zoning ordinance for locality, but there's a lot of aspects and a lot of, uh, details to cover. So those are our current chapters. Um, of course, the zoning map is, uh, as much a part of the, of that. So, um, right now, the planning commission is working on reviewing the zoning map after they finish the text. And it's been my recommendation all along to have that come together as one entire, you know, piece and not to try to do it piecemeal. Oops, get back up. So in terms of organization, again, making the text easier to use and understand so that you can, you know, citizens can understand it better. Through the years, things have been added or, um, put in different places and just trying to make it better organized and also comply with state code. A lot of things change in state code that we're subject to and we need to update our city code for that. We've also in there had a, have a converted list of permitted, we've converted the list of permitted land uses. Like you saw earlier, what, what's included in B3. And we put it into a matrix or a table so that it can be, um, user-friendly basically too. And then revising the floodplain management chapter to, again, comply with FEMA regulations and the model ordinance. And ours was in pretty, pretty good shape, but we still have made a few tweaks in it, in the draft. Again, administratively and streamlining, we always here, you know, we want to be able to serve the citizens of the city the best with making, um, uh, our code easy to, to go through or to use. So clarifying the process here, I gave an example that we didn't even have. We don't even have the actual zoning ver, variance application process in the code. It's in state code, so we have that to refer to, but, uh, we now in this draft have added that. So it's compliant with state code. Decreasing, I mean, um, putting more terms and land uses and definitions that we're really lacking. So in some ways that will cut down maybe the planning commission having to make a determination, is this similar use or not? And then stream, uh, streamlining the process to allow some things that can be done administratively and that don't have to go through, uh, waiting for a planning commission meeting. And that's under telecom facilities and floodplain development permits. Because they're subject, like in the case of the floodplain permits, they're subject to the FEMA guidelines anyway. As far as new things coming from our comprehensive plan, we have drafted a historic overlay district that is a, I would say a minimal amount of, uh, regulation. Uh, we model it after the city of Waynesboro and how they have done theirs and, um, have been pleased and successful with that. And it, it doesn't have an architectural review committee. It just addresses if, um, a structure is contemplating being torn down in historic district, what process needs to go happen if that, um, occurs. Then a flexible redevelopment district is also, um, in line with our, uh, future land use map as far as some specific, uh, special development areas that need to be mixed use perhaps. For instance, the Bristol Mall area is one of the flexible reuse areas. Um, redeveloping some specific older properties. Eliminating the RT Townhouse Overlay District, but including the standards in there. So nothing's changed except having to approve an overlay zone. And, um, that, I think it just sort of cuts down a little bit on, on, um, time, process, et cetera, for an applicant. Uh, we've added, you know, there's a lot of, um, um, interest in maybe accessory dwelling units. We discussed doing that in R1, but, uh, the decision was made just to, um, R2 and R3, which are the two-family, R2 is two-family district anyway. So, but we didn't really have it spelled out that someone could say, take a garage and make a, um, second dwelling unit in an R2, even though R2 does permit duplexes. Um, we haven't gotten it drafted yet, but we have a section where, uh, we hope we will get some basic landscape regulations to be added and we have left a space for that. Some of the other provision, uh, revisions, we spent a long time on sign regulations, which are always difficult, to say the least. But we needed to make some changes, uh, to make sure that we were, uh, content neutral, I mean, content neutral based, uh, on our signage, uh, regulations. And, uh, we, we also lessened some of the restrictions on temporary signage and reorganized the chapter. It's kind of hard to, uh, to really interpret, so we've made it easier to understand. The land use matrix I mentioned already, uh, we addressed even agricultural uses in residential zones. If someone wanted to have, um, chickens in their home, we didn't have anything really to address that. Basically, we had to tell them no because it's only permitted in agricultural area. But now depending on the amount of property and the distance to the next closest residence, they can apply, it's drafted in there, that they could apply for a permit to do that, up to, with several limitations. And then revised the section on telecommunication towers. It was very, very technical, doesn't need to be, I don't think. And we had to also include these small cell facilities that are now, um, more prevalent. So that is really quick overview and, uh, but I wanted to at least introduce this to you all. You've had the document. If you've had time to look at it, I'm sure you have questions, especially just hearing the short presentation, you may have questions. So, um, I don't know, it's up to you all if you want to have a work session or two or several together as a council to, to go over the draft ordinance or to, you know, meet individually with me to answer your specific questions. The planning commission is continuing to work on the zoning maps and looks like we're probably going to have a, um, open house type of public input on those. And we could do that for the, the ordinance itself, maybe by late October. And we would like to be able to finish the project by the end of the calendar year if possible. I know it's a lot of, uh, new things and stuff for you all to, to learn about, but I just wanted to at least take this opportunity to cover it as quick as possible at this moment's point.
All right, thank you. So before we get into discussion, um, we had a person sign up for item five. We don't actually have public comment on item five, but, uh, you were signed up. Do you want, do you want to talk? I say I wouldn't do this for just anybody.
Mr. Mayor, members of council?
My name is Nancy Marnie. I'm a resident of the city of Bristol, Virginia. I live on Euclid Avenue. I am a taxpayer, property owner. Uh, I'm also a former member of the planning commission. So I am familiar with the planning commission and with what it does, how it does, the games that are often played with the planning commission and the rules of the games and why I do not like it. Now, one thing I would, uh, I have not seen this document and, uh, with Ms. Morgan's permission, I would like to come down and, and read that. Someday I'd like to have my own copy in a private place and I'm just going to sit down and go through it. I would urge one, one or two things here, not knowing any more than I have heard in the last two minutes or so. Uh, interpretation and definition. In trying to rework the ordinances and rework the manuals and so forth, I would urge you to be extremely cautious in terms of definition and interpretation. Now, sometimes things look good on paper and they sound good, they just don't work. And you must be very much in tune with that particular facet of this. It just doesn't work. And be very careful in terms of definition and interpretation because it may be something that seems very simple and it isn't simple at all. And if you try to cut out too many of the stopgaps and too many of the, uh, uh, you know, the be careful signs and all that, then you may miss something by trying to speed up the process. That's not always the solution. Sometimes the process needs to be a very deliberative process. Now, one thing I picked up on that Ms. Morgan mentioned here was chickens. I well remember what the council at that time went through trying to get rid of chickens within the city limits. There were, uh, there were people complaining all over the place, all the time to the council at that time about people having chickens in their yards and the noise and the smell and everything else, attendant to chickens. I remember when I was a little girl, and I was a little girl. Our neighbors in back of us had about two or three chickens. And, uh, that was a long time ago, but one of the traumas of my life was watching the man wring a chicken's neck. I haven't forgotten that since. But my point is this, the city went through a lot to get rid of chickens within the city limits and any other kind of farm animals and so forth. If people want that kind of a life, they need to do that outside the city limits where it is more appropriate for that particular use. So I would urge you be extremely careful on definition and interpretation. I really need to sit down and look at this thing. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. All right, so I'm going to open it up to council discussion. Anybody got any questions or comments?
I got a question, a couple of comments. One, I noticed then you mentioned the historic, uh, overlay district. And, um, I know, I'm glad to see that. I know that came out of, uh, the comprehensive plan, a lot of the workshops, there's a lot of interest in that. I was just curious, uh, are you working with Bristol, Tennessee? It's my understanding that they're also looking at, at historic zoning. Particularly, I'm thinking in the downtown commercial historic district, you would want those to be very similar.
Right. Uh, I've talked to the city planner there and, um, I know they're hiring a consultant to draw up guidelines for them. And I've sent her what we have drafted here. So we're, we always, we share information.
Okay. And then my, one of my comments, I guess, is really, um, you was talking about that calendar. Personally, I think it would be good not just to have a, a council work session, but to have a joint work session with the planning commission. So, I mean, up to this point, they've done a lot of work and I appreciate, uh, the time that's gone into it. I know it's, it's been a while and there's a lot of work, but, uh, it might make things go easier if we could understand what their thought processes were for why things were added or changed or deleted. Uh, I think that would be a more productive use of everybody's time other than us meeting and then them going back and kind of back and forth. That's my only comment.
Okay.
I just wanted to say thanks to the, the city staff and the planning commission for, for their work. Cause I was on the planning commission for a brief amount of time and it's a complicated document and there's a lot of revisions, but all, the ultimate goal is to look at it and try to make it better. And so, uh, we appreciate your work on it.
Right. Thank you. Uh, the planning commission has worked very hard on a lot of meetings and they've probably gotten tired of hearing from me on it. In the draft, I've tried to, I will note, I've tried to do like a little annotated stuff at the top of each chapter so that, um, to say this was in our current zone, in our current ordinance, it's such and such location or it, you know, it changes that section or it doesn't change or whatever. Or the reason for it and et cetera, but just to try to help.
Another comment along, a, a redline version would be very helpful if, if possible, just to see
We.
where thing, where language has changed.
Yeah.
I don't know if, how difficult that is, but.
That, that became very difficult. We did that, I did that, uh, the planning commission had big notebooks, Michael can test, you know, big fat notebooks and, and Mr. Wengard also knows. They, and they would get a marked up version and then the clean version because the marked up version was often very hard to read. Because there was a lot of reorganizing. It wasn't necessarily changing a lot, but just reorganizing. So it's, you know, we, we can.
And then the clean version would come back and get changed. It was, it's been a long, rather, process.
But we do, I mean, I do have those marked up chapters for each chapter.
Okay.
So a couple of questions. One, the reason you're doing this, do we have a lot of, uh, things in there that the planning commission and your department has identified that are just language type issues that got to be cleaned up? So this is really just a cleaning up?
A lot of it is.
Hang on. So is this just a cleaning up exercise or is this kind of a, you know, kind of strategic look again? Are we trying to wholesale look at how the city's laid out and start to put things in there that changes, you know, how businesses put signage in, where they can put it, where they can't put it, where industrial plants can be, how those have to look? I mean, are we doing like those kinds of changes that, that could affect business decisions now and going forward as well?
Well, I mean, maybe the two of the planning, maybe the planning commissioner in the, on the city council will certainly speak to it, but it was, it was several purposes and mainly, mainly because we had finished the comprehensive plan. The comprehensive plan in several places said, need to revise, you need to update and revise the zoning ordinance to reflect the. So we've done the part about visioning and with the plan. So the zoning ordinance is just a tool, one of a few tools that a locality has to implement the plan. And so it needs, that's, that was a logical next step to do.
So I'm just saying, so this change is more than just kind of language changes. So once you make these changes, potentially, business owners and business decisions will be. be directly affected by some of these changes going forward, potentially, correct? Okay, so, so this is a very complicated, on the surface, it sounds like a lot of hard work, which it is, but it's way more than that. This is, this is a very, very complicated discussion. And when we, when we sit down here and look, and I'll be the first one to, you know, say it, I said, I looked at the first zoning map, and I said, how in the world did this city ever end up with a city map that looked like that? That looked like somebody just picked up a bunch of different colored clay and just threw it on the wall to see where it stuck. That's what it looks like. There was no thought put into anything, you know, where plants are, where neighborhoods are, it's just everywhere. So I guess I'm sitting here thinking, before we go and make a lot of wholesale changes, we got to kind of back up and fix the root cause of what we're dealing with already in the city, which is, what's our, what's our long-term 50-year, what's that map need to look like? Are we happy with the way it looks right now, where everything is zoned? Or are there some changes we needed to say, one step at a time? Where do we want manufacturing plants? Where do we want industrial on the side of the city limits? Let's just take it one little toe at a time. Where do we want agriculture? Where do we want residential? Where do we want, and then all get happy with that picture, and then start to take the next level of detail, which is, okay, now what do those areas need to look like from landscaping, road entrance, road exit, signage, you know, blah, 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 blah? You know, now that you want to make it that way, what's it got to look like? Are we going to do that? Are we just going to live with the problems we see today with, it's just all thrown over? You know, it's just kind of thrown on the wall.
Well, again, the comprehensive plan has a future land use, future land use map. So that, that is the map of what you're talking about, where we want this and where we want that. And then, so what we're trying to do is look at our zoning map, which doesn't have to match, does not normally match the land use map, but it's a guide, I mean, that's the guide for where we want to be 10 years down the road, or 20 years down the road. So we are looking at detailed little places that, why is this place zone B3 when that's really should be a B1? Yes, we are looking at that. We've got numerous places where the zoning boundary crosses properties and splits them in half, and we're trying to match those with parcel lines, because when the zoning maps were first adopted, we didn't have the digital tax parcel mapping we have now. So, so it's, I don't know if I'm answering your question, but we do have the comprehensive plan as the guide, and...
Well, you're just substantiating what I said. You've got lots of, lots of issues in how it's all laid out today. So how do we, how do we unwind that? Are we just saying we live with it, and so everybody's happy with what we see, and now we're just going to put language to, you know, comply with the map as it is? So we, I got to kind of understand that to get my mind wrapped around it.
Well, I think it's what the comp plan did, that this council voted on a year ago, maybe?
Two years.
Two years ago?
Which is a living document.
Right. And so, I mean, I think a lot of the concerns you're bringing up are things that were addressed in the comp plan, and that's what the purpose of the revision of the zoning ordinances are for. We recognize it's a living document, and we recognize that things may need to change as we go forward, but a lot of the things that you brought up tonight are things that were addressed in that comp plan two years ago.
Yeah, and what you're saying is what the Planning Commission has been working on, what, three or four months ago? We got the binder?
Right, you got the binder back in June or July.
And everybody was asked to go over that binder, because we're talking two and a half years of planning work and workshops is in this binder. Is it a perfect document? No, it's not. But it is very much more pro-business friendly than the documents and what this city has been working on in the past. Nothing has changed overnight. It's a long drawn-out process. There, we went through and we looked at the city, and we fully understand about, you know, just the scattered zonings throughout this city, and looked at the main corridors, you know, and, you know, what are they zoned right now? And if they are rezoned with grandfather clause in, if they stay what they are from now on until whenever, but the zoning is there to allow them to expand to another use down the road, that's how you grow and pull this all together over time. You can't just go in and rezone the whole city, because what's business right now is business, and they're going to stay in operational as business, whether it's manufacturer, whether it's 1, 2, 3, or business 1, 2, 3, manufacturing, residential. So it's a long drawn-out process. There is no perfect document, you know, and this is two and a half years' worth of work, and I think Mr. Hartley has a great idea about the two boards coming together and opening up the book and talking about everything, and ask the whys, wheres, and ifs, and how did y'all, you know, come to this, and what's the logic behind it? But, you know, if, it's going to be a never-ending cycle. Everything changes constantly. So 25 years from now, people's going to be looking at what we've done and say, what in the world was they thinking? You know, it's just, that's the way it is.
But the one thing, and I think this, you know, like you say, when we went through that process with the comprehensive plan, and got a lot of feedback from the community, the Planning Commission did a lot of work on that, it laid it out. Now we need to take the next step with the zoning ordinance, and the thing to get away from that hodgepodge is, I have seen way too many special exceptions come up here.
Exactly.
And that's what we need to get away from and get...
Exactly.
There's where you get a lot of that hodgepodge.
Yes.
And I think this, that would be one of my goals, and I think that's the intent, is to get the zoning more uniform and conforming, so where we don't have all these special exceptions that come to council, because of the way things are currently.
I think we have very few special exceptions.
Well, not as much, there for a while, it seemed like they were, they were coming left and right. I can...
Does, yeah, I mean...
Not lately, but I can remember a time when it seemed like there were a lot, or in my mind, too many, I'll put it that way.
And so we, we've looked at the list of uses, like I said earlier, to expand those so that we have them, you know, defined, and we know, we're covering a lot more uses that may be not listed in our current ordinance. But we can certainly talk, I'll talk to the Planning Commission after meeting Monday about a joint, if that's what consensus that you all want to do.
That'd be good. I've got a couple of questions for you.
Sure.
So you talked about zoning for accessory dwelling. So, and you mentioned something about redoing garages into houses or into living spaces. Is that the only thing that falls under accessory dwelling? Or what, I should say, what all falls under accessory dwelling?
It would be a, not the primary dwelling, but a smaller, we have some provisions, if I can find the right section. Hang on a sec.
So while you're looking for that, would that, would that include something like tiny homes?
No.
Because I know that's been a growing trend that I've heard about a lot.
I've been trying to do some research on tiny homes, because I haven't seen where they're really being done in Virginia.
They're probably, I've seen, I've seen them around, and I've known some people that are all about them, so it's probably something that'll eventually get here.
Right. The state building code, in some ways, addresses that because of the size of the rooms you have to have to meet codes. But basically, accessory buildings are incidental and subordinate to the permitted principal use, don't involve any conduct of trade on the premises, so it's not for a business located on the same lot, and there's some other more details in center page 71 and 72. But it is only on a lot with a principal, single-family dwelling in an R2 and R3 districts, it has to be less than 50% of the square footage of the principal dwelling. So there's other provisions under that section I won't go through all, but...
You'd also talked about, thank you for that, you'd also talked about lessening restrictions on temporary signage.
Yes.
Is that the kind of thing where you're, you're driving up near Exit 7, you see, we buy homes for cheap, call this number? Is it, is it like, what are we talking about with temporary signage?
That can, it can be any many number of types of even temporary signage, but what we have to do is define the type of signage by the material, or the manner where it's placed, or the location. We have to try to steer clear of whatever the message is, is not how you define the sign. But if it's a yard sign, and it's in the right of way, it's currently not allowed in the city, anyway.
Is political signs in that category?
Political signs or non-commercial signs. They can't be in the right of way, but they, they are a little different than commercial advertising signs.
Because I don't like them.
Pardon me?
They go, they all go, I don't like them. They just clutter the whole city, everywhere, they're ridiculous.
Mr. Mayor, that was all very comprehensive, or over two years studied and included by a planning commission, that should all be taken care of.
I think that's temporary signage. What we worked on with temporary signage falls in the category of like, you see them on car lots, the pole flags.
Well, those same old signs.
You know, those things only last a year or so, and then they're deteriorated, they're gone.
Welcome race fans.
Welcome race friends, that is a banner.
That's a banner, not a sign.
That's a banner, not a sign.
I think this...
What I'm talking about was done probably 15 years ago, or maybe even 20 years ago, and it was an extremely comprehensive study by our own planning commission, ran on for 10 years, and it was excellent, excellent. And then a bunch of Keystone Huts started playing with it, and I think they made some changes. But we had one of the best sign ordinances of anybody in South West Virginia. Are you...
I think even hearing that, and then what's a sign, what's a political sign, what's a banner, I think, I think it would be good if we could, if you could address with the Planning Commission, having a joint meeting with us, you know, just so we can kind of hear what their thoughts were on how this, how this happened, how we got, you know, this document that we're going to look at. God knows we'll probably have more questions, so if you could do that, that I think that'd be really beneficial to us.
So is this ordinance to make the signs like Hilton Head Island, where everything is like this tall, even McDonald's, and that's all you see, so everything's hidden, so you don't know that even McDonald's was either tree line?
No, sir.
No, the idea behind all this signage was, we, the city has typically been so stringent with our signage, we tell people, come in, open up, do business with us, and then we restrict them so much on the signage, they can't get the word out there that, hey, we're even open, and here we are. You know, we got to look at what is a happy medium between being too, too strict on signage that it hinders the operation of the business to be able to let the public know that, hey, here we are. Because if you force them into always putting ads out there, buying ads, airtime, $50,000 pole signs, or $100,000, because that stuff ain't cheap, you know, to let the public know, then you are stagnating the medium, the mom and pop growth and small business, you're stagnating them, you're tying their hands and not letting them get the word out that we're open for business. Now, not every business that opens up can put $100,000 in a sign, they just can't do it. So there's got to be a happy medium somewhere, and that's what we've been working on.
Yeah, I appreciate all y'all, all the work you've done, the Planning Commission have done to do this, and I really would like us to have a joint meeting if you could, if you could address that with them, that'd be great. But thank, thank you again for presenting this tonight.
You're welcome.
All right. Item six, approval of performance agreements, staff report.
Council, you have before you tonight two performance agreements in regards to potential Pizza Huts within the city of Bristol, Virginia. One Pizza Hut would be located near the intersection of Gate City Highway and State Street, and then the other would be located near the Falls Development. These two performance agreements require a minimum of $2 million in capital investments within the city of Bristol. It also would give back over time a period of the mills tax revenue that each one of these facilities generates to the tune of $350,000 for each performance grant. The amount that would be rebated back to the businesses in years 20, 21, and 22 would be 70% of the mills tax, 50% in fiscal year 23, and 25% for the remainder of the term of the agreement, which is an eight-year agreement, or $350,000, whichever is first. The, the reason for the, having the mills tax rebated heavy on the front end is due to the fact we do have an increasing debt load beginning in 2023 and 2024, and that way we will have additional sales tax or mills tax revenue to help cover some of those debt expenses. We've had numerous two-on-two meetings in regards to this agreement, and we've discussed it at length, and I think this is eventually what has come out of those meetings that we've had with the developer and with council.
All right, thank you very much. No one has signed up for public comment on this, so I'm looking for, you did sign up? Yes, you did. Excuse me. Come on up, Mr. Pollard.
Thank you very much, gentlemen of the council. Inasmuch as the IDA, I would be very interested in knowing why an IDA had an evenly split vote on this matter. I know that their, their primary purpose is promotion of city businesses, new businesses to come, and two people voted for it, and two people voted against it. I'd like to know why.
I'd assume it's because there were an even number of people there.
So basically, four people eat opinions, and...
Yes, 16 opinions. Go ahead.
Well, the contracts allow, at least the introduction material says that it requires $2 million of capital investment, but the contracts include not them to allow non-capital expenses, including but not limited to utilities and employee benefits. And it also allows both the purchase price and lease payments, which would potentially allow double counting some of those investments. And also, I was concerned with why the incentives start at 70% of the tax generated when it's been, I wouldn't say longstanding, but the past couple of councils had policy that those revenues would be split 50/50, rather than giving back more than we're getting out of it. And I would at least be more comfortable if that were 50/50 to start with, and then tapering down from there, rather than starting at 70%. But the other issues of the contracts are even more concerning than that. Thank you.
Thank you. All right.
Can I just, I did sign up to...
Go ahead, everybody else has talked tonight.
Yeah. So, the only thing I'm, sorry. So, everything that I've read says that when you bring in restaurants, you're not really generating, especially with something like a chain restaurant like a Pizza Hut, you're not really generating new tax revenue. You're just having people move around within the city and eating in different places. So Saks Bees goes down by 5%, you know, Burger King goes down 5%, the new Pizza Hut goes up 10%. So if we're just moving a tax base that's already there, I'm having a hard time understanding why we would put that much into incentivizing that, that type of business coming in, when there's not a lot to be gained from it. If you were opening a Ruth Chris Steakhouse, I understand, you know, people would be driving down from Richmond or Roanoke to eat. I completely, I mean, that's an experience. People come from, you know, hundreds of miles around, but Pizza Hut? You know, and you're putting one of them, I mean, what, I mean, from y'all's experience and what y'all seem like, like, what is really to be gained by the city?
I don't think it's going to have a buffet. What's the point of Pizza Hut without a buffet?
But I mean, that's just my base question, is I don't understand where we're gaining tax revenue. It seems like we're taking tax revenue that's already there. It seems like we're taking tax revenue that's already there and then giving some of it back. So it's almost like you're reducing what we would be taking in as opposed to increasing it, unless I'm missing some piece of economics to it.
Thank you. All right, looking for a motion and a second on this.
I move to approve the performance agreements.
I'll second.
All right, motion is made by Mr. Farnham and second by Mr. Hartley. Is there any council discussion?
Well, I'm gonna say that these discussions, you know, been going on for a long time. And I personally think they're a little on the heavy side, you know? And I hope that we have seen enough to cause a pause. Because there is a lot of truth to the statements that was just made. We need to slow down as a city, we all know we need businesses, we need brick and mortar going vertical, but we don't need to give the city away to do it. And we're, we're deep into this, it's been a long, drawn-out process. I'm not happy with it, it's not a devastating agreement that's gonna devastate the city. The city will come out on it, the city's gonna make money, the city's gonna do good. But we can do better than this to protect the city's money going forward. That's my comments.
I'll just say, and this kind of addresses Mr. Pollard's, one of his questions though. And it is a little bit of a departure, what we're doing here, but I think, you know, given where we're at and what the city's needs are, it'd be, I think this can work towards our advantage because right now it helps the developer on their more upfront costs. But it gives us much more money than fifty percent, which has typically been through the whole life when we need it the most in a couple of years. So I think that's a, a different feature, but hopefully will work much to our advantage when we need it to.
Well, I'll say a couple of things. One, Mr. Watts is correct, this doesn't make sense for a lot of reasons. When you've got a business like Pizza Hut, that's a national corporation, that has a business model and the economics to, to survive and be profitable as a, as a business, right, in the restaurant business, and then you're coming and asking a small city for three hundred and fifty thousand dollars of tax rebates, there's something wrong with that picture, or instead, you know, basically delaying your tax liability. There's something wrong with that picture, so to me it's a red flag. So I've thought, I went back and forth on this, I've thought a lot about this, and you know, the city has gotten into a lot of these agreements over the last, you know, ten to fifteen years. And it's hard to make any of them make sense, really, when you just really look at it. And so my position is we gotta get out of that business. As a government, if the business needs that kind of help, there's something fundamentally wrong with that business. Either their execution is wrong, their business model's wrong, there's something fundamentally wrong. And, you know, I'm just, I'm just not comfortable that we continue forward as a city doing this kind of stuff. Whether it's a dollar, and, and the other problem is we're picking and choosing. We're picking and choosing winners and losers and who we give the money to and who we don't. So it's, there's a lot of inherent issues with this. Yeah, it's not a lot of money, you know, we'll, we'll survive without it. But it's turning into a, it's turning into a business philosophical thing for me. It's just, I just can't look in the mirror anymore and say that's the right thing to do, I just can't, it just doesn't make sense to me. If it was something very unique, that is a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity for this city and that is absolutely the only way we could close the deal after multiple discussions and multiple angles, that's a different, that's a different topic, that's not, that's not what this is. So I don't, I don't like it, I'm a no vote, so it is what it is.
Well, I think, you know, I'm gonna take my share of the fault. You know, we jumped the gun on this one out the gate a long time ago, okay? But when we look at this kind of stuff going forward, it needs to be a restaurant that if they ask for incentives, and it's a restaurant, it needs to be a restaurant that's not in the tri-cities. That people from Johnson City and Kingsport and Abington and as the surrounding area will come to that particular restaurant. Not go from this block to that block because there's a new restaurant on this block. There's where we have missed the mark. Incentive packages and programs are perfectly fine if it's done properly. Because the cost of doing business and the cost of construction these days is astronomical. So if you've got something that can lure a unique restaurant in or business, you need to be able to have some tools in your toolbox to work with. You can't just be flat-lined no, you gotta have some tools in the toolbox. But we're pulling them out for everything and there's where we've missed the mark. And we've got to, we've got to regroup and rethink this going forward.
Well, I definitely agree with, with what everyone said, but I'd like to maybe for a minute, take a moment and argue kind of the other side of it because I don't think it's all gloom and doom. You know, this, this isn't really like giving, you know, millions and millions of dollars to an anchor store at a new retail development that, that's just gone forever. They were gonna build these restaurants, there's gonna be two new ones in Bristol. And my understanding was, you know, they came and they asked for some help and if we didn't, they were gonna open up somewhere else, maybe across the state line or in a different locality like the county. And we can, we can roughly track their sales and what will be brought in, we know what they're saying their initial investment will be. We know there'll be tax revenue that comes in in the form of real estate taxes plus meal taxes. And then we know there'll be two restaurants and some jobs, you know, some people will be working there. So it's a sign of, there is some things happening, there's some growth. Ultimately, what will be brought into the city versus what is included in this incentive package? We know we're gonna be at a net gain, it's, it's more than we have right now. It's more than, and it's Pizza Hut and we've talked about, it's more than we would have if Pizza Hut stayed in Bristol, Tennessee and another one went to Washington County. And there definitely is the argument about, okay, if this opens here, there will just be fewer people going to these other restaurants in Bristol. And that's assuming everyone was gonna eat in Bristol, Virginia anyway. But if you argue the other side and say, well, there's some people that go to Bristol, Tennessee anyway to go to this restaurant. And there may be some people that live in Washington County that may go to Abington, but now they're gonna come to the Falls. Yeah, I think there are some, some benefits to this. Again, it's, it's definitely not perfect, it's definitely something the city doesn't need to get into every time. There may be some times the city has to look at it when someone comes and says, no, this isn't in the city's best interest, so. But you're right, we've been talking about this for a while and we're sort of, you know, far in it now and so, I mean, it is what it is.
Yeah, I think that we've certainly been talking about this, we've been talking about this for so long that the first meeting we had about this, I was sitting next to Doug when we talked about it. So it's, it's been a while and we've gone back and forth with them. And, you know, ideally going forward, I think, as some people have said, we need to have better guidelines on how we determine if someone gets, you know, a tax incentive, you know, whether it's, you know, you're gonna produce this many jobs, you're gonna, you're gonna do this or that, you know? And maybe give them a percentage, instead of saying, we're gonna give you three hundred thousand dollars, you'll get X percent of, you know, of your tax revenue or whatever. So I do think we need to address this going forward on how we have a more standardized thing. And I know we've had discussions about, discussions about that and I think it'd be beneficial to do that more. But, but especially like, like Anthony had said, you know, in this case, we're, we're taking a business from another locality and with a new building, we're putting it in Bristol, Virginia. And then there's a second branch of that same business that's going to go in the DRI zone at the Falls, which will get us an additional kickback on state, or on state tax revenue. So, so it's a, it's a different situation, it's two, it's two businesses for the price of one, really. But going forward, I think we need to be very careful with what we do. Because we don't wanna give three hundred and fifty thousand dollars to everybody that comes down the highway. But I mean, in this case, I think it's something that we should do and we should go ahead and do it.
Well, counsel, I'm just gonna add to the comments, there's one way to get out of these performance agreements. And the way to get out of these performance agreements is to do what's right by the city finances going forward, continue to do what we're doing. We have a, a good start on what we've done over the past two years. And as long as we keep doing what we're doing and businesses recognize that we're on the right path and we have other economic expansion within the city over the next sixteen to eighteen months, businesses will want to come to the city of Bristol because there'll be people here spending money, going to their businesses. And that's exactly how you get out of these performance agreements.
I agree, I agree. Let's go ahead and clerk will call the roll, please.
Farnham?
Yes.
Mumpower?
No.
Wingard?
Yes.
Hartley?
Yes.
Osborne?
Yes. All right, item seven, discussion of, discussion of financing options for property acquisition, staff report.
Counsel, this is a continuation of the discussion we had in regards to the purchase of the Virginia Employment Commission building at Exit Seven. As counsel knows, there's six hundred and eleven thousand dollars that is, that we have to pay at closing in regards to this transaction. And what are the amounts to now? We've got three choices basically, one, do we pay cash for the building? Two, do we finance the entire six hundred and eleven thousand dollars? Or three, do we put down a substantial down payment and finance the remaining portion? At this point, I've had numerous discussions with each of you. I feel like I know potentially where some folks are and I don't know where other folks are. So this is a discussion so that we can move forward, let our outside bond counsel know how we'll be moving forward with this and also let a, a bank know how we're moving forward in the event we choose to finance.
All right. Council discussion.
I just wanted to say, I think it's great that we at least have the option because some places don't have the option. We know we can finance it, which maybe some people say we shouldn't do, and we can pay cash for it, which other people say we shouldn't do. So, but at least we're able to choose and have the option. And it's, it's because of the hard work of the last couple of years to get the city in the position where we're moving forward and things are looking brighter ahead.
Okay, I'm gonna repeat what I've already said multiple, multiple times. The city has already acquired enough debt. Government has a spending problem going in debt. And we have the ability to write the check and be done with this and never make another payment. Is it gonna squeeze us a little bit? Yeah, you don't write a six hundred thousand dollar check and not feel those pains. But they're gonna be short-lived. And my vote is to do it and get it over with and get it behind us and move on. This was a, a really good opportunity for this city. We took advantage of the, the sale of the building and I am so glad we did because it was desperately needed. But for us to continue to add to that debt load, I, I'm just, if we do that, shame on us. We have come way too far to start backing up now.
Well, I agree with Kevin, I was kind of in the three hundred, four hundred thousand cash and maybe a couple hundred thousand to finance, but after the last couple of meetings where we've seen the financial state and where we are and thinking about some more, we've got the cash, we need to pay cash. First project we've had, we pay cash, we move on, we've done something good. We paid the first project down, we've paid cash, we've taken care of a huge issue with the offices that they had to live in. And we've shown the world that not only can we get our finances right, we're, we're willing to pay cash for what we need to do and to move on. That's, that's a pretty strong message and I'm ready to send a strong message and say, we pay cash. And I don't think it's gonna hurt us like, like any of us think, it's not gonna hurt us. I mean, we know we can move through this easily, so we need to pay cash and move on.
We'll feel the pain, because that's a big check.
It'll just be a flick of the ear.
But we'll get over it in, in a quick timeframe.
I have a few questions, would taking on any debt, we just had the article about the credit rating, the city's credit rating, could, would that possibly be affected in any way?
I'm gonna reiterate what Moody's advised that would lead to a further upgrade in our credit rating in the future. One is a material reduction in the city's debt burden. I spoke with you all today in regards to how we can do that. And over time, we need to start looking at how do we pay off some of this callable debt that will be coming up in the future. And if we can pay off five and ten million dollars here down the road at one lump sum, that's huge for the city because all of a sudden you've knocked a hundred and eight million dollars down of debt, maybe down to sixty million dollars in a relatively short period of time. And that's, that's significant for this city, that gives the city breathing room. The other factor that would lead to an upgrade is a significant increase in the city's reserves and liquidity. When you look at our financial policies, one of our financial policies are is to make sure that we properly fund our reserve accounts and other accounts so that we do have enough money to operate. And Moody's agrees with that and that's a policy that was put into place back in the spring of eighteen. We have followed that policy since and it paid off for us at this latest Moody's credit rating upgrade. And then sustain the trend and favorable operations of the solid waste fund and including the reduced general fund support. And we did that this past spring. And Moody's recognizes that and they say if we continue to do that, it could potentially lead to an upgrade. Things that are somewhat out of our control, but not necessarily out of our control is a substantial tax-based growth and expansion coupled with improvement in income levels. And when you have a major potential economic development project that's gonna come to this city in the next sixteen to eighteen months, that's number four. So if we do those four things, there's no reason based on this report from Moody's that we wouldn't have another opportunity for an upgrade. Now, factors that could lead to a downgrade is a material reduction in operating flexibility from falling reserve and liquidity levels. Is six hundred and eleven thousand dollars a huge sum of money for the city? No. But when you've got roughly thirteen million in operating cash?
Not quite that now. We're less than that now because we restricted some, some funds. We're right about eleven in operations now.
So when you, when you have eleven million dollars in operating cash and you take six hundred and eleven thousand away from that, is that a material reduction in their operating flexibility? I wouldn't necessarily say it's material, but I think it's something that has to be considered when you're looking forward down the road because there are needs in the city on a daily basis that pop up. And I've discussed one of those significant needs that occurred over the weekend with each of you all. And I anticipate having a report back on that relatively shortly. A substantial increase in the debt burden is six hundred and eleven thousand dollars in additional debt, a substantial increase in the debt burden, not for a city with a budget like ours, that's not a substantial increase. And things that are somewhat out of our control is a material contraction in the city's tax base and weakening income levels. I think that's more of a macroeconomic situation, more so than a microeconomic situation that we would have, that we would have control of in Bristol. So to answer your question, would that six hundred and eleven thousand dollars affect us? It could potentially affect us depending on what happens in the future because we cannot guarantee what type of cash that we would need at any given time.
Yeah, I mean, I'll just say, I have no problem financing it, all of it, and partly for that reason. We have worked very, very hard and taken a lot of, of actions to build up cash. And we still, as it said, everybody says, we're not out of the woods yet and we don't know what's coming. And just even with, I mean, last night we, we met with the school board and we talked about, here's an unbudgeted need that come up with the maintenance workers and stuff. We talked about, you know, after, and one, and, and this whole building really, yes, it was a great opportunity, but it, it all came outside the budgeting process. If this was a true pressing need, why wasn't we talking about setting money aside for this during the budget and going through the proper process? during the budget and going through the proper process? You know, I have no problems buying the building. It, it does serve a need, but one of my concerns there was how does DSS move in? Evidently, I think the state will assist with some of that funding, but we've talked about other uses for this building. We're gonna need, we don't even know what that will cost right now to make this building usable for, for other city functions. And, and I mean, without having any idea what that is, that's where we need to put the cash, so that then maybe we can see that savings come next year when, when whatever we finance will be due. The, the amount will not be that significant marginally, but I think the other thing is, if we continue to have good years, my understanding is the way this is financed, there's nothing that prohibits us from paying it off early. And there's a lot of uncertainty, and, and it seems like more and more things that keep popping up outside the budget process. Fixing up this building after the DSS moves out. Issues with the school that we, we still need to address, and, and then we have issues that came up this summer at, at Gene Malcolm Stadium with the baseball that, that haven't been addressed. And there's only so much that we set aside in the city manager's contingency fund and, and, you know, so, you know, we're having to deal with these things, and that's what I'm saying, is, you know, there are things, some of these are small, but there's always things that pop up that you don't see. The best thing we can do right now is to make sure that we have the, the cash so that we can deal with it when something does happen, whether it be small or something big. And there are a lot of things potentially big that we could use that cash for as well. So, you know, as long as we finance it in a way that we can pay it off early, I have no issues with that at all, because we could, if, if I understand right, we wouldn't even have to make a payment till after the next fiscal year. So if we look, see we're looking good towards the end of the year, we could budget more than what the minimum is and, and start paying that down in a quicker fashion.
So I got a question. So this is to the CFO. So what's the, what's the current operational cash burn rate between now and the next collection time? How much, how much cash, based on normal operations, payroll, fuel, all the things we normally burn, based on last year's, you know, September 15th till December, when you start collecting your taxes? How much cash would you burn through of that 11, whatever you said?
It, some of that depends so directly on the timing of the VDOT reimbursements. We anticipate that we will not fall below 5 million.
Good. So you burn through at least half of what we've got?
We anticipate not flo, not falling below 5 million. That being said, it could be higher than that based on the timing of VDOT reimbursements. They're significant. We have significant road projects right now.
Well, Mr. Hartley just said, it seems like, since we were talking about the budget a few months ago, I guess there, there are some things that, that we're using cash for, like the stadium, couple, you know, clients we had at the landfill. I'm trying to think what else, what other items? Are you increasing the staff size at the, at the school, for the school system, for some maintenance folks that we talked about last night? It does seem like we are using, we're using cash for a lot of things, and, and I know what the levels are, what we want to be at. So part of me, you know, when I got here, I was told, you know, we're not on the tan anymore. And I asked, what's the tan? And it was explained to me how it used to work, and wow, that was scary that we were on that. So in a way, it's, you know, we're spending so much cash on other things, maybe it's a good idea to look at not using our cash and keeping it away. And like Mr. Hartley said, if next budget season, if we always have the ability to pay it off early with no penalty, and that's the important thing, with no penalty...
Well, I think one thing that probably hasn't been said quite loudly enough is, we don't know how much it's gonna cost to fix the social services building.
Yeah.
I mean, all of a sudden, $611,000 could quickly turn into $900,000 or maybe a little bit more. And, and it could be less. I mean, I'm looking at it from worst-case scenario. I mean, if I sat here and told you it's gonna cost $25,000 to fix social services, and the next thing you know, I'm telling you, it costs us $325,000, my head's on a chopping block, and it should be. So, you know, I want to be as cautious as we can. We just don't know what we're gonna find once social services moves out. And there is a cost to move. I mean, you know, it's not like moving from your apartment to another apartment down the street. You go to pick up some boxes from Walmart and put your clothes in it and get some friends together and move. There is a cost to move. So, and we don't know what that will be. And if we're looking at moving potentially two or three city departments into social services, that move may be a little more expensive than what we all anticipated.
Yeah, and I think we, you know, you can go, we can go down the list, and if we compile what I've heard from the vice mayor and from Mr. Farnum, you know, unexpected cost of the baseball field. I didn't plan on walking into the school board last night and spending $90,000. Any kind of other thing that could pop up at the school board or at the schools, the repairs of the social services building, there's a whole lot of ifs out there about how much money we could end up having to spend. So I mean, I, I think it is much more prudent to finance this and to finance all of it if we can. You know, we, we're leveraging our assets. I would rather have all this money sitting in the bank and be able to pay the loan off early than blow through a bunch of the money, and then all of a sudden, we don't have money. You know, that's, that's where I'm at on it. So I'd, I'd rather you go ahead and do the financing options for us.
So my question, you've got a $5 million cushion right now, right, based on what you just said?
Roughly.
So...
And that's anticipated, certainly not guaranteed.
Right, right. No, I get it. So based on the July, August, you know, this fiscal year's revenue minus expenses, what's the cash flow statements look like? Are we creating cash?
No, the first, the fall of the fiscal year, I think right now, we're at about a $3 million deficit. The first, the fall of the fiscal year...
Let me finish. Compared to last year, you know, the same, the same cash flow look these first two to three months versus last year, what does it look like comparatively?
We're at a deficit compared to prior year of less than $1 million, though. And some of that's the timing of revenues and expenditures.
So we're $1 million worse this year?
Less than, less than.
Huh? Less than $1 million, but we're still worse?
Yes.
In the first three months of this fiscal year than we were last fiscal year, same, same months?
Well, I just looked through August. I hadn't gotten into September yet. I'm still in August.
But I looked through August. Okay.
Well, the mayor mentioned the school system, and we were at the meeting last night, too, and, and it's interesting, because we talked about increasing the staff for the maintenance for the school system, which is a great thing, because we can do some projects that we need to have done and not hire out outside contractors. So potentially, we could save some money that way, but we just have to pay for the two extra staff that we discussed hiring. So we did already give them $200,000 for some of those repairs, for the restrooms and for the vestibules, but it sounded to me like that money plus, it may not be enough for materials. So I would anticipate the school system may be coming back to ask us for more money to complete those items.
I can't imagine that they won't come back asking for money.
Don't let the school system take you down that path. There's no way they're gonna need more money. If they need more money, when they come back, because they don't know how to purchase materials properly to do that work, they get no more money. Okay? I'm tired of going through this with construction project management hat on, when they go through this and say they need more money, because they don't. They need to manage what they've got. They've never done it, and we're gonna force them to do it. Right now, they're probably listening, that's fine. But that's what's gotta happen. You know, enough's enough, right? That's why we gave them the staff. You don't go outside at frickin' $100 an hour when you can bring it inside and do it for $40 an hour, right? No business even does that, right? Well, they've never done that. Tyrone was sitting right next to me, he says, what do you think about these staff? I said, I would've already hired them. I would've hired them nine months ago, and I would've already had the bathrooms done. You guys want to talk about it forever versus do what you gotta do to get it done at low cost, right? That's the problem. It's government. Government has never done this as a living. They don't know how to do it as a living. They just push it down the road, and then before you know it, a $100,000 project turns into 1.1 million. That's what happens. You know, we gotta be done with that. They can start running this like a business, because you don't waste that kind of money, because you don't have it to waste.
Oh, yeah. I think money's been wasted, for sure.
We gotta start considering taxpayer money as money that we're wasting, and we have wasted $100 million in this city over the last 25 years, at least. You know, think about that for me.
Definitely.
A tenth of a billion we've wasted in this city on ridiculous projects, right?
Definitely. And we were told those bathrooms and vestibules were gonna be done, hopefully, before school started.
They should've already been done. It should've been done by the end of July.
All right.
Anyway, back to the social services. What are we, what, what do you need to hear from us?
Counsel, it sounds like there's a consensus to finance this building, and I'll go, go about and start that process with bond counsel and the local bank.
Excellent. Very good. On to the consent agenda. Looking for a motion in a second.
Move that we approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
So motion is made by Mr. Hartley and second by Mr. Farnum. Please call the roll.
Can I make one comment?
Oh, wait, hold, hold on.
I just want to say, there's one item in there in the consent agenda, and I noticed a receipt that the police department received from Strongwell, and I know, you know, they do that, not looking for recognition, but I do want to thank them for, for their assistance with the help in getting that canine dog. I really appreciate that. They're a great corporate partner, and like I say, they, they really don't want the credit, but thank you to them for doing that.
Thank you. Call the roll, please.
Farnum.
Yes.
Mumpower.
Yes.
Wingard.
Yes.
Hartley.
Yes.
Osborne.
Yes. And then we've all been the opening act for item C, which is city manager's comments. Do you have anything you want to talk about here at, at nine o'clock? You good? We stand adjourned.